Good evening, I'm going to open the regular city council meeting for September 3rd, 2013, calling it to order. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Council President Henderson.
Here.
Counselor Grant.
Here.
Counselor Folsom.
Here.
Counselor Butterfield.
Here.
Counselor Langer.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have the approval of the August 20th, 2013 council meeting minutes. We have the approval of the August 22nd, 2013 council meeting minutes. Resolution 2013-050, authorizing the city manager to sign the 2013 IGA with Washington County for the purpose of continued participation in the urban area security initiative. We have resolution 2013-051, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County Health and Human Services for the purposes of supporting the Sherwood View Assistance Abuse Team.
I'll move consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Presentations, we have one tonight, and it's a proclamation declaring Constitution Week, whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America, and where it is the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution, in order to support and preserve and defend it against all encroachment, whereas the independence guarantees the American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week as designated by the proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with public law 915. Now therefore, I, Bill Middleton, on behalf of the City Sherwood Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2013, as Constitution Week in the City of Sherwood, and urge all citizens to celebrate and reflect during this week, the many benefits of our federal constitution and American leadership. Next, we have a public hearing. The business carried forward, Michelle Miller, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Middleton. Before I begin, I wanted to address a procedural issue. Council last heard this text amendment back in May, and they took public testimony and then decided to continue the deliberations to a different time, based on the amount of information that was received. In between that time and today, the council, through the city council email, received information concerning the text amendment that needs to be incorporated into the record. And because they were received, the public must be given an opportunity to respond to the issues in that email. So, we've identified two different alternatives that the council could take at this time. One could be to allow the public testimony on any issue concerning the text amendment, or council could open the public hearing and take testimony limited to the issues at hand in the emails that have already been received by council.
Does anybody have a preference? I would prefer to open the hearing, and only on the accepted written letters that came in, and the people who wrote those can come up and testify. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, it's limited to those people, then?
So you have a motion to reopen the hearing for the purposes of taking testimony on the issues concerning the emails that were received since the last hearing in May?
That's how it works.
Okay, great. So I will proceed with that. So tonight's presentation will give a little process update on where we were since May 21st, which was a whole summer ago. We'll talk about the planned unit development text amendment, and the planning commission recommendation to the city council. It really concerned and boiled down to three distinct issues, one being the lot size minimums available for a planned unit development in this particular zone, the maximum allowable density when developing as a planned unit development, and also, it included elements of the southeast Sherwood Master Plan. And floating through all of those issues was, is the fact that this is part of the Ken Foster Farm DEQ contaminated soil site, so I'm going to talk a little bit about that as well, and update you on some developments that have occurred over the summer. So initially, we received an application to amend the very low-density language involving a PUD to allow for reducing the lot size, and also increasing the amount of density that could be within a planned unit development. The planning commission held multiple hearings on this issue, and came up with a recommendation that's before you this evening through the ordinance and the exhibits, back in April. Initially, you had a little hearing on May 21st, you began your deliberations, and you wanted more time to review the wealth of information that was before you and consider that. And that's where we are for tonight's hearing. So, in looking at the, here's an aerial of the site, of the properties that are involved with this text amendment. It only concerns properties that are zoned very low-density residential. It includes basically about five properties that are still undeveloped in this area. It's east of southwest Murdock Road, in between two subdivisions, Fair Oaks to the north, and Sherwood View Estates to the south. It is approximately 36 acres. It's considered the Tonkin scablands, an environmentally sensitive area where the Missoula floods, glaciers, kind of scoured the land and left a real rocky terrain. So it also makes development a little bit tricky in this area as well. So the first issue, the minimum lot size, in our residential zones in Sherwood, we have the, for very low density, you have the minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. If a developer decides to use a planned unit development, they're allowed 10,000 square foot minimums, ranging all the way up to our high-density residential for single-family homes of 5,000 square feet minimums. So this is something that's not changing through the recommendation from the planning commission, keeping it at 10,000 square feet minimums. Now, density is a little different issue. Currently, the very low density allows up to one unit per acre, that's 40,000 square, about an acre, maximum size, all the way up to high-density residential. You can see that this recommendation allows for four units per acre with a planned unit development, where the current standard is two units per acre. So that is something that's changing through this. And you can kind of see the recommend, for you to consider, is the properties to the left of your screen are 7,000 to 9,000 square foot lots, and the properties to the right are the Sherwood View Estates, where it comes to 7,000 to 12,000 square feet. And that density, that's taking out all of the roadways and all the areas of open space, come to about 3.6 dwelling units per acre. That's what that kind of looks like, to give you a comparison. And the proposal on the table is for four units per acre. So this is, another issue about this area is that there was a grant in 2006 to develop the southeast Sherwood Master Plan. Back in 2006, they knew that the area was challenging to develop. The developers and the property owners got together, and there was a grant that addressed some of the issues found in the southeast Sherwood, this particular area. And so, funding ran out, basically before a consensus was reached on what to do with this area, but it got as far as the planning commission resolution to consider this alternative when new properties are being developed. So the challenge with that is not really having any teeth to what exactly the southeast Sherwood Master Plan, because council would need to really adopt this, to really know what the community desires for this particular area. So left with that, the planning commission wanted to give council several alternatives to consider, one being deny the application as a whole, because so much time has elapsed since the southeast Sherwood Master Plan was developed, and regroup and consider planning that area anew. Also, some of the property owners have changed, as well as the players were different, and some of the terrain has changed, some of the areas of open space are no longer really suitable for, the trees are gone, et cetera. Or, come up with some language that incorporates this, the components of the southeast Sherwood Master Plan into the text amendment. And that's what the planning commission recommended, elements of the southeast Sherwood Master Plan in this text amendment, should the council wish to consider moving forward with the text amendment. Finally, the Ken Foster Farm site. As some of you are aware, this was part of an area where the Ken Foster Farm area took tannery hides from the Frontier Leather Facility back in the 60s and 70s, and used them as a soil amendment. And in 2006, the area was found to be contaminated with hexavalent chromium, and DEQ listed it as a site on their database. In 2011, the DEQ updated their concentrations of what was acceptable for hexavalent chromium, and that areas that would require more cleanup. So this past summer, the DEQ is conducting further investigations in the area, and developing a plan for how to address the contamination. And they're sampling in the more intensive areas near houses and yards, and thus, the cleanup will be more intense in those areas. And any, continue to monitor, the city continues to monitor that, and any development proposal will have to comply, of course, with any DEQ remediation efforts. So with that said, I would answer any questions that you might have about the project.
I have a question, Bill. So what exactly is the planning commission, what's their recommendation?
So the planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval of the text amendment with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet if they're developed as a PUD, along with minimum density of four units per acre, should they follow the guidelines of the southeast Sherwood Master Plan. And those are identified in the text amendment, things to consider such as open space, consider the existing development in the area, creating buffers between the existing subdivision and in the area, and intensifying development in the other areas.
Well, it kind of sounds like to me, they're not sure exactly what they want, and they're asking us for our recommendation.
That's true, because so much time has elapsed since 2006, and there never really was a clear-cut answer to, this is what the community really wants for that area. You get counter-information from developers who find it challenging to develop the property. The property still remains relatively undeveloped, and the people that live there want to maintain the feel of what is out there existing.
I'm still a little bit confused as to exactly what they want us to do.
So, they wanted to give you some alternatives, not really knowing what direction that council could give them. Council could suggest that we revisit and develop a new master plan for the area, and devote funds and staff time for that endeavor. If council felt that this language was close enough to what the southeast Sherwood Master Plan was envisioning, then they provided language that would incorporate some of those same elements, and that's identified in the actual code language itself. Because it was never adopted through an ordinance, the planning commission is unclear as well, as far as what council and the community actually want as a whole for this particular area. What do you want to see there?
Counselor Butterfield, if I may, if I recall correctly, they, I don't know, they were really torn. They didn't want to forward a recommendation of denial, or adopt the southeast Sherwood Master Plan, and leave it at that, because they knew that you may have a different decision. You may decide that you did want to approve it, and if you did, they wanted to make sure that they gave you parameters that they were, that was acceptable to them. So the recommendation of approval with the lot size and the density, and following the southeast Sherwood Master Plan principles, was really saying, if you choose to approve this, this is the acceptable parameters that we would recommend, but it's really a policy choice, and, I mean, I guess I'm not, I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but it's really ultimately council's decision on whether or not you want to approve it or not. But if you did, their recommendation is approve it with these changes.
Currently, the density is, it's very low density, so what is the current lot size if we did not take these options, just left it alone?
So, it currently is at 10,000 square feet minimum, and for a planned unit development, which means it goes through planning commission, and also through council for approval of that lot size. Or if they wanted to do a standard subdivision, if a developer would want to do that, the lot size, minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. So without that extra planned unit development component, they're required to comply with 40,000 square foot lot minimums. And there's two planned unit developments already in that zone, that being the Sherwood View Estates, and also the Fair Oaks subdivision.
And they're 10,000-foot minimums?
The Sherwood View Estates has the 10,000 square foot lot minimums, but they're-
Can you put that map back up? I think that would help. There you go.
Oops, sorry.
There you go.
Nope. So, those lot size range from 10,000 to 12,000 square feet. And that's where you get a density of 3.6, and that's with the planned unit development.
Would be for this.
Mm-hmm.
Option one, right?
Mm-hmm. The applicant at the last hearing indicated that they were asking for lot sizes of 8,500 square feet, I believe, but that's not the planning commission recommendation.
So would, do you think it's accurate, Julia or Michelle, that the planning commission wanted to make a recommendation consistent with the current planning use of the area north, and the area south of this development?
Most definitely. They heard a lot of public testimony that, from the residents that currently live there, of the importance of preserving that area, and providing buffer, and keeping that same rural-esque feel to the area.
So when we talk about the fact that it's been five years, no, I'm sorry, seven years since the southeast Sherwood Master Plan group was formed, right? Is there anything to imply that this level of development is not consistent with what people want out there, based on the testimony that we received? I don't know, that's part of, partially a subjective question, but...
Do you want to answer that, Michelle, or you want to?
Well, you're right-
Because what's before us is whether or not we want to make a policy decision to allow a certain level of density or not, correct? Or do we want to reform a subcommittee, go back out and ask the people who live there, or live around there, or developers, you know, what would be acceptable, spending staff time to do it again, right? And haven't we just done that, to a certain extent?
Just done that.
Collected information about what people would really like to see developed out there?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I can answer part of your question. I think the reason why there hasn't been development out there since this happened, was that when it was even acknowledged by the planning commission, it was recognized that in order to make this happen, the property owners would really have to get together-
Right.
And do something else, do a next step, a plan amendment, some, something to make that, the vision of a southeast Sherwood Master Plan a reality. And as Michelle mentioned, ownerships have changed, more information about the DEQ contamination has sort of come to light, the economy didn't do so well, so there were a lot of factors that I think led to nothing happening within that timeframe. Whether or not, I guess I don't, you've gotten the testimony, both, you know, earlier on, as well as in the packet, about how people, sort of on the outside edges of this area, feel about the development, and I don't know if that's changed or not.
Okay. So the new information that may come from the DEQ testing, will that, would that dramatically change a density recommendation?
The-
Would, if DEQ, the new information that comes from DEQ, would they, as part of the recommendation, recommend a level of density?
So when, point blank, I posed that question, they don't really want to have an answer at this point officially about that, but they are analyzing the soil at this point as if the density was one unit per acre, because that's our existing zoning. So the more, the more dense the development, the greater cleanup would have to occur for it, to be safe for people to live there.
Thank you.
So, a text amendment to our code, though, applies to all areas of our community, correct?
This particular amendment is exclusive to the very low-density zone, so it only affects that if developed as a planned unit development. So it's under that subheading of very low-density.
And this is the only area that that particular text amendment might apply?
That's correct.
So, my bigger concern, and has always been my bigger concern, is the safety. So, the cleanup, the reason that people who want to develop there want smaller lot sizes is they need to make more money to pay, because the cleanup and the scab terrain is very difficult, right?
Right, and then the roadway, getting back there, the public infrastructure, and the cost of putting all of the roadway network, and the sidewalks, the length of those is expensive.
It's very expensive. When do we hope to have more information from the DEQ on this?
So they're phasing out the project. Phase one involves primarily what's known as the use-on's property, and that's where they found the most initial contamination to occur. And then the rest, they're spreading it out in a grid pattern, so they'll know more once they find out what's in that grid pattern of phase one, and the use-on property specifically. And then the wetland.
And is there a date, a timeline?
Not that I'm aware of. I think that this will continue for a few weeks, and then they'll go back. And it's based on receiving grant funding, is how, to the degree that they're paying for, because they're kind of considered orphan sites. The people that currently own it are not responsible for the contamination itself.
Well, I'd hate to see us have to pay for duplicated services, so I just want to keep that in mind. I don't want to start all over again, and have staff gear up to start at the beginning, and rebuild this thing, so...
So, Julia, do you know approximately what the grant was for the southeast Sherwood Master Plan, if that's your question?
It was a quick-response grant.
Yeah, it was a quick-response grant through the state, which is different than a TGM grant. I want to say about 80,000, but I'm not positive.
It, to me, what I'd like to see is the final DEQ answer, too, so that we're not making a decision that we give them the okay, or we change it, and then DEQ comes back and says it's going to cost, or it's, yeah. And I don't want to get into the burying like they've done before, or any of that. I think it's, because 20 years from now, what's going to happen? Oh, the city let us bury it, now we want it out, or whatever, it could happen. But, I'd like to get a final answer from DEQ, that's my feeling. Michelle, I got a question. So, if tonight, if we end up approving the text amendment, that still doesn't let the property owners off the hook for any of the DEQ cleanup at all? They still have to go through all that process and figure all that out?
So the, from my understanding, and I'm just reading and having conversations, I don't have any confirmation of what this is, so that they are cleaning it up for the property owners that currently reside there. That's what DEQ is responsible for. Should additional development occur on there? That would be a new kind of program that might get established, of who pays for that.
And I don't know that DEQ is fully committed to cleaning it up to any particular level at this point. I think that's what they're looking at. A lot will come out in the analysis of what they find, and what they can do. They have limited funds as well, and there's still a court case going on. So I don't know that, it's fair to say that DEQ is determined to clean it up to any level for any purpose, for anybody at this point, but certainly, that's probably the maximum level that they would go to if the funds were available, if the cleanup was sensible. But to answer your question, Counselor Clark, or Langer, yes, before anyone could build any new structures on the site, they would need to meet the DEQ requirements, in order to make sure that they got a no-further-action letter, so that they could do it. Whether that was done by DEQ or private property owners, that would have to be figured out through the process as it moves forward. So, Mayor, did I hear you say you were going to open this up for testimony with this-
Just for the people that wrote the letters in, if they're here.
Now might be a good time to do that, and then you guys can ask questions and debate.
And to be clear, anybody's allowed to respond to what's in those emails, but the substance of the discussion has to be limited.
Strictly to the letters, right.
That's right. I'm sorry, Michelle, would it be possible for you to point the council to the pages in the packet?
That concern the text amendment?
That are the, yeah, the ones that we're talking about, opening it up to speak about.
Yeah, I read it.
Okay, so-
So, it would be after-
Yeah, it is. Well, it's-
Okay, you guys, never mind, they're on it.
They know where we're talking about.
This one, here. It's this one, okay.
About 219.
Mayor, you can open up the public hearing if you'd like.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing on these two written comments. Having nobody come forward, we'll close the public hearing. Just my personal feelings on this, is, not personal feelings, but from what I read on this, oh, she's going to come back up, yeah. I'm kind of in favor of leaving it to the 10,000 to 12,000 square foot lots, to be consistent with the other residences that are around there. I don't know anybody else's feelings on that?
I tend to agree. I think that keeping it consistent with what's already been there makes a lot of sense for, and it sounds like that would be an option that's supported by the planning commission also, and so, for those two reasons, I agree.
Same.
I also agree.
So I guess we can call for a motion? No?
Or it's a resolution?
It's a resolution.
Oh, it's an ordinance.
It's ordinance.
It is an ordinance, Mayor, so we'll have to just follow the procedures for a regular ordinance, to read the caption and adopt, if all the council is done making comments.
Would you like a motion?
Anybody else want to make a comment?
I'll move, we read caption and adopt, ordinance 2013-003 to amend section 16.12 of the zoning and community development code relating to properties on very low-density residential.
Second.
Give me just one moment.
Well, Sylvia is looking for that, I just want to make sure council understands, because I want to make sure I understand. If the motion that you've suggested passes, what is the conclusion of that? What does that mean? And I guess I'm looking at Mr. Crean, I just want to make sure people understand what it means.
My understanding is that we accept the planning commission's recommendation- My understanding is that we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation of no more than four units per acre with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, consistent with the development that currently resides north and south of, yeah.
Okay, is that correct? Okay, I just want to make sure everyone understands, so thank you.
Ordinance 2013-003 to amend section 16.12 of the Zoning and Community Development Code relating to properties on very low-density residential. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Langer?
Aye.
Counselor Butterfield?
Aye.
Counselor Folsom?
Aye.
Counselor Grant?
Aye.
Counselor President Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
We now are into citizens' comments. I only have one form, did anybody else want to talk? First one will be Eugene Stewart.
Eugene Stewart, P.O. Box 534. The Senior Center, we had a fairly successful banquet, wish to thank the city for their cooperation and support of it. It appears that between the two organizations that sponsored it, we cleared about, somewhere between $6,500 and $8,000, I haven't seen the final numbers yet. But, as we go on, one thing that has become apparent is that with the completion of the update, we still are stuck with a problem, I haven't heard in less than the last couple of weeks they solved it, bathroom doors being stuck open because they're not ADA compliant. My understanding is, is that evidently the project went over budget, and one of the things they cut out was the automatic closers that open and close the bathroom doors. They've got the right-sized doors and everything installed, but they have no ways to open and close them except manually, which is pretty heavy. My understanding is also that's about a $15,000, $20,000 cost, that's just the guesstimate, and I don't know how accurate it is. The other thing that's coming up is that our agreement with Loews &amp; Fishes is coming to an end, or not an end, but it, this current one expires on June 30, 2014. We need to start thinking and finding out what Loews &amp; Fishes wants to do, whether they want to continue helping with the programming or not, or whether or not the city can possibly, and the seniors, do it a little bit more efficiently. Basically, what's involved is that the director, where's the funding for her position going to come from? Comes from Loews &amp; Fishes, they put a pretty high level for the director to raise money to basically pay for position. So, if the city, you know, was to take it over, or at least they should study it, can the rentals that can be generated from that site, in fact, for you that attended it, it can be dressed up pretty darn good. And I think we need to maybe, you know, look at, can we push it enough so we can raise enough funds to pay for the director, or maybe, you know, if the city has to kick in some small amount? But, we need to start looking at what we're going to do with it, and go forward from that, and I think time is of the essence, and we need to form some sort of committees to start looking at it and not just let it slip underneath the screen and 30 days before it expires, everyone rushing around trying to decide what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anthony Bevel.
Anthony Bevel, Southwest Lindley Sherwood. I keep hearing you want citizen input, but you really don't, and so, how do I know that this is a true statement? Months ago, the citizens of Sherwood found out that a Walmart was planning on opening a 140,000-square-foot superstore. Sherwood citizens mobilized, mobilized into a group, now they're organized. The city council found strong opposition to the proposed Walmart, strong enough that the city council, in order to placate, first time I've ever written anything, the ci, to placate, the citizens said, "Let's form a special committee to draft ordinance on how to conduct business and how to become a good cit, a business citizen in Sherwood." It was a brilliant, brilliant, brilliant ploy, and that's what it was, a ploy. And that's all it was, a ploy. In my heart of hearts, I was thinking, you never had any intentions of listening to the special committee that was formed. You, you guys and gals were the smartest boys and girls in the rooms, you knew better than anyone. Here, a special committee was formed, the citizens worked hard, and, hey, we'll kick it to the curb. I heard that it would cost 4,000, excuse me, $5,000 to put the proposals of the special committee on the November ballot. 5,000 compared to 41 million, the whole, the city's in a hole right now. I don't think that's anything. So, we heard that the proposed special committee ordinances would not stand the scrutiny of law. The special committee had access to ci, to city lawyers, and I think we had three different ones that showed up here. So, how did the proposal slip by those lawyers to present to the city council that wouldn't stand the scrutiny of law? So, the citizens, so the city council kicked the proposal to the curb, saying, "We'll visit, we'll come back to the proposals in the near future." So, what I want to know is, when is the near future? Do you have any intentions of visiting these proposals again? So.
Thank you. With no more citizen comments, now we're going to go on to council announcements, and we'll start down with Counselor Grant.
I have none, thank you.
Counselor Langer?
Yeah, I have a little, little bit of information. My wife and I had the opportunity to go around and meet some of the city employees this last week. We brought some goodies to the Public Works Department, we went from the Public Works Department to here, to City Hall, from here, we went to the Police Department, and from the Police Department, we ended up at the Fire Department. So, it was, it was great in the fact that I got to hear some, some words from some of our hard-working employees, and my wife got to see how things went. So, it was a great trip, and I, and I had a great time learning more about what our city people do.
Thank you. Counselor Folsom?
I don't have any.
Counselor President Henderson?
I just wanted to thank city staff for the all-city barbecue that they had last week. It was good to get everybody together, similar to what Counselor Butterfield said, is we don't often have the time to spend time with staff when they're not working or providing information to us, and sometimes it's nice not to always be so formal. So, I want to thank you for the invitation and thank staff for putting that together. And the only thing that I wanted to say was, obviously, schools started, some schools started today, some schools start tomorrow, that, that we have many, a number of school zones in this community, and that kids will be walking and riding their bikes to school, and to have everybody just slow down a little bit, maybe pay a little bit of extra attention when you're going through, near a school or into a school zone, that, you know, some of those kids might be running late and might not look both ways. So, just to be careful out there with school back in session. Thank you.
I had one thing, Planning Commission will be bringing back the Town Center proposal to us in the next, I believe, in the next council meeting, and I want to thank the Planning Commission, they put in some tough work on this, and it, it's a good plan, I mean, they really did a fantastic job. So, I see we have some of them out there, but it was a long, arduous process, but it's coming to us next, so please read it, and if you have any questions, I'm sure they'll come back and answer them for us. And one other thing, Counselor Butterfield forgot that we are part of the city, too, working, and didn't bring us anything.
Yeah. I'll make it up.
Now, go to City Manager Report.
Before I get to a few items I wanted to talk about, I'm going to have Kristin Switzer and Bob Galati come up and address the concern that Mr. Stewart raised about the ADA doors at the bathrooms at the Senior Center, because there is an answer there.
Thank you.
I'll start, and Bob can fill in the more technical details, but the doors are ADA, they do meet ADA standards. The doors to the restrooms have been replaced, and from what I understand, how they were originally specced was to have the ADA assist. We took out the assist because of budget cuts, but kept the same doors. They are heavier than we wish they were, but they do meet the requirements. The seniors have chosen to prop them open because they still feel like they're too heavy. Did I cover it?
Basically, we've lightened the action on the door to decrease the amount of force necessary for the seniors to open it, but when you're talking about moving a walker and trying to pull the door open while you're hanging onto the walker, it makes it very difficult. Now, the doors do have sensors already located on them, they're set up for future installation of the, of the assists, so that can be accomplished, it's just that they were very expensive and made the, the cost of putting those things in at this point in time almost a, a non-go for the project, because they were very expensive in their, in their, in their construction costs for the materials. So, you know, at a future point in time, we can install them, the, all the electricals and the sensors are there, ready to go.
How much might that be?
What were those, 30, 3,500 to 5,000 apiece?
Something like that? So, 10?
Well, you're talking, yeah, they were, by the time you took everything into account, it was about $20,000 for, what, three doors? Men's, women's, and the, the unisex bathroom.
And the, Jean also mentioned our contribution to Loews &amp; Fishes that we've been asked to fundraise, was that 30,000 this year? Is that correct, Kristin? Do you remember?
I, I believe that it was, and from what I understand, they've determined that Teresa or Loews &amp; Fishes didn't meet their goal, because they were able to count building rentals and some of the other things towards that, so.
Great.
It wasn't just purely on fundraising, but trying to look at other ways to bring money into the facility as well.
The fundraising is tough, it's, it's really tough. I mean, a great dinner like that, I was hoping he'd say, "We raised 30,000," but it's, it's tough, but I know, I'm, I was there last year, and I was out of town this year sadly, but I, I'm sure it was fabulous, I heard great reports.
So, what was the total cost of this project? CG, CG BG grant, right?
Two, yeah, I believe the original amount was 224, and then we made an adjustment of 30, right? Does that sound correct? So, 254.
So, during the process of the project, we were over budget and something had to go, and that's what went? Was the automatic doors?
That's correct. When we went out to bid, the bids came back higher than.
You're nodding, and he's saying no.
I'm thinking about some of the changes that we've made during the construction process itself, and not at the bid time. Yes, we did have to cut something at the bid time because it came in way high, that's why we asked for the additional funds, and this was the way how we could balance it, was to get anything done, this is what we had to do, so.
So, I'm just wondering, since we decided not to do the assist doors, was it just an oversight that we ordered the really heavy door? Or it was already specced, or?
It was already specced that way.
Okay, okay. So, it would have been a change order had we had to bring them out, okay.
Right.
Okay, and what do you attribute the cost overruns primarily to?
Well, as far as cost overruns, actually, we came in, according to budget, we had to, to a large extent. We've got it down to nickels and dimes at this point. Some of the things that we did was we changed the flooring type to actually bring it back into budget. We've made the contractor basically hold him to a higher standard, making sure things got done according to spec and make sure it was done correctly, but we didn't add a lot of stuff that would change the cost. Some stuff we actually had to pay for, some other things he had to pay for.
Right.
But, as far as I know of, and I've looked at the, the numbers, we're coming in pretty much eye-on-target, we might have a little bit over, but we're talking, comparatively speaking, maybe one-tenth of one percent over.
Okay. And when do you think the job will be done?
The project itself is.
Or what's the expectation from the contractor?
Well, we're, we're fighting with, it's always the last few percentage of the project that takes the most time, and we're doing the punch list, and the punch list items are the things that he's got to get right before we accept it. So, we're on to the last few. How long it takes? Well, it depends on how long he's going to take to get them done right.
Right, okay.
So, another week, maybe?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the project?
And then the other important issue that Jean raised, and it was one that you talked about back at your council retreat, is the whole issue about the future of meal, Loews &amp; Fishes, not Meals on Wheels, and whether they're going to continue, and if they don't, what does that mean? And that's obviously something we need to be prepared to put together in the budget, which is coming up. So, we're going to have to start talking to them right away. So, he, he raises a very good point, because if they don't renew or do something different, we've got some decisions to make that will impact the finances to continue operations there. So, any other questions on those two items? I want to share some good news that I know the council heard about a few weeks ago, and I'm going to have Sylvia pass this up here. There are 242 cities in Oregon, most of those cities have city recorders. And as of a year ago, they didn't update the list, but as of a year ago, only 32 city recorders in the state of Oregon have achieved the Master Municipal Clerk certification, and Sylvia is one of those, she would be the 33rd in this state, which I want to talk a little bit about her career here, because this is something that she should be very proud of, and I want to make sure that the council and the community knows the great services that the city recorder does, that Sylvia has. So, she joined us back in 2006. Immediately upon joining the city, she joined both the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and the Oregon Association of Municipal Recorders. From 2006 to 2009, she attended various conferences and academies offered by OMAR, and then in 2009, she was served, she received the Certified Municipal Clerk Certification, which is the first level of certification through the International Institute. She continued her education from 2010 to recently by going to a variety of conferences and academies, trying to get her educational credits to achieve this certification, which she just obtained this past month in August 2013. I've had the opportunity to work with city recorders throughout Oregon, and I've said this to the council before, this, our city recorder is certainly the best I've ever had the privilege of working with, and I just wanted to acknowledge her efforts to achieve this certification. This is not something she has to do, it's not a requirement of the job position, it's continuing education, really holding yourself to the, the highest bar, and I wanted to make sure that not only the council, but that the community knows about this distinction that she recently achieved. So, Sylvia, I thank you, congratulations. So. I think the council knows this, certainly in staff, but all the work that goes into helping you as a council do your job, really, she's the key, and if you look at any city in Oregon or across the country, the city recorder is really kind of the glue to help keep things moving forward and keep government moving forward and democracy moving forward. So, it's a very important position, and a lot of folks don't realize how important it is. So, I just wanted to let the folks know about that. One other item of business, and then I'm going to have Tom talk about a couple of things. The Finance Director Recruitment is nearing The finance director recruitment is nearing conclusion. We will have final interviews this Thursday. We originally had four finalists that we were interviewed, or were planning to interview this week. One of those finalists dropped out for personal reasons, so we'll be interviewing three on Thursday. So that process should be wrapping up in the next week or so to finalize the finance director position and my selection on that. So I wanted to let folks know about that as well. Before I pass it to Tom, did you have any questions for me in particular? Okay. Tom, I'm going to have the special committee work that was done, a couple of items updating the council in terms of plans for some of the things that the special committee worked on over the summer so hard on. So go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so there were a couple of items that we were continuing to work on. The first was in regards to hazardous substances. You asked staff to go back and talk to specifically the city of Eugene to figure out how often this may have been implemented from, from their side, what was the impetus for, for doing it in the first place. And I was fortunate enough to actually talk to their code enforcement manager. City of Eugene's a little bit different than Sherwood, it's bigger, and so they've got different groups. So he does code enforcement for the majority of the code, but he doesn't do code enforcement for like planning. They have their own code enforcement on that side of the building. The other thing that they do differently is they, kind of like the state, will adopt an ordinance which becomes a part of their code, and then they, after that, then adopt administrative rules, which implement the code provisions but are on the administrative side. So with that background, he was actually back, he was at the city, just had come to the city back in 1992 when this was put into place. There are notations in the code with later dates, but he just mentioned that they were updating the entire code manual. They actually haven't ever touched this section since 1992, when they originally put it in place. He said, it's a little gray for him, it was a long time ago, but he remembers that they were having problems at the time with cooperation with different agencies such as DEQ, their local fire department, EPA. There were some, there were some concerns in the community about how well the different jurisdictions were working together and would work together. So the city felt that they kind of needed some tools potentially in order to, to make sure things work, and if there were hazardous spills or substances on properties or other things, that they would be able to effectively deal with that. He said it was kind of a project that they started, but really never actually finished. They actually never even adopted the administrative rules to do the other side of the code enforcement piece of it. They basically put it in place, and there was a, Lane County had a pollution control cooperative that essentially got together and controls the air quality stuff, as well as some of the land stuff. DEQ kind of changed the way that they were doing things after that point in time, and it became a much more active agency, including things, their fire department essentially really changed their practices as well. And so from his perspective, they put it in place, they never really fully implemented it, and he says they've never used it. To his knowledge, he says they've actually never used that code a section as far as he can remember, and he certainly says they haven't used it in the last 10 years. So I wanted to give you that feedback and see, I guess, if this is something you want staff to continue to work on, or if this is something that is, or not.
I think what might be helpful is if we have our fire department and police department give us a little talk on if we have a spill, how it's handled, who pays for it, and that, before we get into actually working more on the ordinance. Because we may have a lot of that covered. I know the fire department, police department both work very well together on these situations, so I don't know, the rest of the council be interested in that?
Mayor, do you envision a work session, a short work session type thing?
I think it'd be good for the public, just to have maybe a 15-minute--
Council meeting.
Correct. I think it'd be good to do it in a council meeting, so everybody can see it, and it's, you know, we record it, and if people have questions, we can answer them.
I think they'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that would be good as well. I think it would address a lot of the reasons that they originally did this in the first place, because from my understanding, DEQ and the fire department do a great job in this area of coordinating those things. I think letting people know what that is and how they deal with this thing would probably demonstrate, unless we go down a completely different direction, that the type of language that they were putting in place probably isn't going to be very effective, because it's already covered under different agencies that are doing that work. And then just really quickly on the camping ordinance, we plan on bringing that back to you on October 1. We should have all the language put together in an ordinance form with the comments that we heard from council, and I guess our question is, is do you want to do that as a work session, or would you rather just bring it back as old business move forward? Great. We'll do that then. Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Meeting adjourned.